Let's get our workshop started. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted on Monroe County Schools website tomorrow. You've got an agenda here for the workshop and you see who's gonna be speaking and when, and I will turn it over to Dr. Windsor if you will get us rolling.
If you will begin, in the pocket of your binder, there's a packet of information. We just, we wanted to give you this packet of information because this is some of the, these are some of the things that are commonly asked for when we discuss the budget this time of year. So we'll just go through this real quickly and then you can keep it to refer to. The first page, this is an itemized list of travel expenses, how it's been paid out from two thousand twelve to the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. The questions have come up about mileage and once we purchase the fleet of cars that we have savings. You can see there wasn't a minimum amount of savings after we purchased the vehicles. Two thousand twelve, thirteen, we spent one hundred and fifteen thousand in travel. Two thousand twenty, twenty-one, we spent seven thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. And you can see that there's been a steady decrease with the exception of one year since we bought the vehicles. Now, this year, and we'll go over that in the budget, there will be a little more of an expense on that due to the work-based learning, which will be paying travel for them, but that's included in the budget. And we'll discuss that at that time. So it'll be a little more than that, but you can see there's a steady decrease since we moved the vehicles now instead of paying mileage. The next page, basically explains what it costs for step raises and then the step rate and two percent. You see the first section is professionals. And you'll see that a step raise for professionals, just a step rate only, is just over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And then if you do a step and two percent for professionals, it comes to a total of six hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. So that shows budget, it shows what a step costs, and then you combine the step and two percent.
Is the step local money owing?
Well, the step, we get funded for a portion.
Technically, if you want to look at it that way, it is, because usually the state where professionals just, they usually just give a percentage. So if they step up on our scale, that is a board decision to step from year to year. It's not a requirement with the state, but given the percentage is.
So the percentage is state mandated, state mandates.
We gotta make up a certain part of what the state sends, is that right?
Yeah, it's not fully funded.
No, we gotta make up part of that two percent. We gotta make up part of that two percent. And you know how much for?
Well, not this year because we don't have final numbers yet.
How much was last year? That's okay.
Well, we didn't give the full, I don't think the D funds gave us that percentage last year, did they? So I think everything was well for last year.
And that's the part that's always a bit confusing to everybody is we get the money in a lump sum and they say you have this amount to give, but by the time you disperse it among all the positions, we have to, we have to come up with an amount to make it equal, to distribute among everybody. So you look at the non-professionals, a step raise for the non-professionals is seventy-seven thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-three cents. And then if you go to step in two percent, it would be ninety-four thousand.
If, you did use word if there?
And that is not budgeted in this particular budget. And the same thing, food service, a step raise for food service would be nineteen thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars and eleven cents. If you did a step and two percent, which is not budgeted in the budget that you have in front of you, it's twenty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-five.
I have a question here, are these one times or is this an ongoing?
This would be-
The step at the two percent.
The two percent, we have to determine each year of what we're going to give.
So that's just a one-time decision?
Which your next year would be based off of this number?
Yes, if we decide, yes.
Okay, the next page is the pay scale for the maintenance department. And that just explains that it's something that Gil will furnish this with and Gil will put in here for you to refer to. So look at that particular pay scale, if you want to reference that. The next step is, excuse me, the next page is your professional salary schedule. And that's with a two percent raise. And then the last page, oh, here it is, yes, is the non-professional salary schedule. And you'll see the red section, that's been updated this year to add the cafeteria, subs, and monitors. And there's an email attached to that, Ms. Arden had asked that to be factored in. So Gil went and updated it and handed that out to you tonight. That just happened today, I believe it was. So that's new information that you have. And that's the last information that's in the little side pocket.
Are you gonna talk to us more about these two non-budget items or will you decide something or another?
That is something that you can definitely discuss, yes, we'll get to that, to that portion, because we'll go through each section.
I don't know if we have this information or not, but I have a question right here, I went through this. Gil, do you have any idea how this compares with other counties with a similar population and industry? Our county pay-wise, do you have any idea? If you don't, it's okay, I just had that question.
Basically, from the research that we've done prior years, because this comes up every year, I want to say our page is a little bit less than surrounding counties.
Not surrounding, but other counties with a similar industry and population may have to go all the way to up north or wherever that is.
Oh, no, that I haven't known.
Similar population and industry. You want to ask? I just wondered how we are.
And we can get, we can get some information on that, on places that have similar demographics to us, even if it's not right around us.
Yeah, I can take the word.
Well, I knew what you meant. Okay, so if we are ready, we'll go ahead and start with the PowerPoint. And I want to thank Gil for putting that together. We'll just, we're gonna go through the first section, the revenue, the expenses, but I'll take you through. And then we're gonna turn it over to each of the supervisors to discuss their particular budget and take any questions that you might have. So on the first page that you have in your packet, right past the blue binder, you'll see for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, the beginning fund balance that we've estimated, just over two point five million dollars. And then the revenues that we estimate to bring in, just over forty-four million dollars. The statement of expenditures that we have estimated, we have budgeted the amount that we expect to take in. So we're presenting a balanced budget, we're spending what we expect to take in and nothing over that. Hopefully, that's exactly what we can do. But that's what we're presenting to you tonight, so it is balanced, we're not over. The ending fund balance at the end of the year would be a five point six four percent fund balance. And that's in respect to expenses, that's if we do not have to expend any more than we have estimated. So if we are able to stick to this budget, we would have a five point six four fund balance. And you know, you see at the bottom in the blue, the state recommends a three percent fund balance, which is just over one point three million dollars, so we would be well over that. Actually, one point one seven would be the difference, that we would be over the three percent if we're able to, if we're able to keep it with what we have budgeted here, which is expending no more than we bring in. This is a breakdown of the way that our forty-four million dollars is spent in the budget. This is broken down just by lines and you'll see it in a nice little pie chart right here. You'll see how much of the expenses, and I can't even see that myself from there. Seventy-eight percent of our budget goes to salaries and benefits and insurance. So you see the majority of our money that's where it's spent, is to pay for our employees. Five percent is for transportation, so all of your bussing, contractors. Six percent is maintenance and water and electric, so your maintenance and utilities. And that is basically the brunt of what we spend. We have instructional textbooks and professional development, that makes up, excuse me, I skipped technology, technology makes up one percent. Instructional for your textbooks and professional development, two percent. Your building insurance and your trustee commission and workers' department's comp makes up another two percent. And then you have subs and SROs, custodial supplies, those make up the remaining one and two percent that you see there.
Dr. Windsor, if I interrupt for a question?
Yes, absolutely.
I have a question here. Seventy-something percent of it goes for salaries and benefits, how does that compare to the school system? Is that kind of like what they normally do?
If you look at a school system budget, a majority of the money is spent in that way. Majority of it does go towards salaries and benefits.
Percent majority, I'm talking about percentage wise.
Well, yes, the largest percentage of what we are given, what we're allocated, does go toward that actual expense.
Yes, I just want to have that comparison to other school systems. That's loud and clear, they're spending seventy-something percent on salaries and benefits or at least spending sixty. That gets kind of my question.
I don't, I really don't know what the comparison would be for that, but I mean, we can certainly get that for you.
That'd be the same as, you're talking about surrounding or the same as I asked, similar industry and population?
Are you asking what local contribution there is? Did they give more locally?
I'm just asking of percentage of the budget, how do we compare with other school systems? How do we compare percentage-wise on personnel?
And, and I do not have that in front of me, but I, we can certainly get it for you.
That's a honest answer.
I would imagine that it's about the same. Whether you're private sector, corporate, or public school system, the majority of your expenses are gonna be your staff and your benefits. That's just everywhere you go.
When I have seen, like if Miriam Dersky can say, if she does a presentation and she shows generic numbers, I can say, that's why I say that I would think it would be similar, it reflects this when they show an example. Now, it does not give you specific county or district. So my assumption would be that it is similar, that it's closely aligned to that. But as far as a hard member, I wouldn't, I wouldn't refer to quote to. And then this shows the revenue, another nice pie chart, this shows the twenty-one, twenty-two revenue. Sixty-eight percent of our money comes from BEP. So of the forty-four million, sixty-eight percent of that is provided through BEP funding. Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back to it. Twenty-nine percent of our budget comes from local money. And then we do receive grant money in the form of one percent, and then that's from state and grant. And then we did have two percent that comes in from other funds.
What if, Gresh, what if, what if these grants were cut out, where would that leave us hanging?
A lot of our programs would suffer. I mean, you look at coordinated school health, for instance, and what we're able to provide through them. Our SROs through the School Safety Act, or Safe Schools Act, excuse me. That provides a lot of funding for SROs, so we would, we do benefit greatly from grant money that comes in.
That's state and federal?
Yes, and there would be no pre-K program whatsoever.
That's completely grant-funded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to, we should have these in order, hopefully. And I'll just turn it over and each person can explain theirs and take any questions you may have.
Okay, basically, in my portion of the local budget, there's no increase or decrease. We've been given forty thousand dollars to supplement or to help with CTE programs and so requesting the same amount. Do you all have any questions about that?
Which page is this?
Well, I, I have just nine pages. It's seven one three hundred.
That's not, the tab.
Okay.
Got it?
I was looking for next page, seven one three.
I think we lined them up in order on the slideshow, but they're all over the place in here. You have to do one or the other, we found out.
They're in order in your book, but. Basically, requesting the same amount from local money and that, that goes toward purchasing consumables and those types of items for our CTE programs at all three high schools.
Any questions on this?
What if somebody goes back and gets a higher degree?
Well, that's-
Has that already been done? I mean, what if they done it this summer when got the higher degree with the pay raise?
Well, that would come out of the same local, I mean, you have to pay them a higher pay raise, but that's still out of local. The forty thousand that I am requesting for our department is just extra and in a sense to help with our programs. Not just purchasing consumables, things that the teachers need that Perkins will not take over. Like the gas for the railers, wind, for using their wood shaw and things like that. That you cannot anticipate or mention on anything that's consumable. And so the local means just each and try to give them a little bit of that so that the kids can have practical application while they're not in the classroom.
Like the gloves that are helped, science programs, you know, things like that. And to your question, Dawn, that's what I was confirming, if there's a degree added, if you get an advanced degree, we ask that that be turned in ahead of time and then standard checks and certification. So that's included ahead of time in budgeting anyway. Okay, any other questions, Dawn? If not, we will go to seventy-three, four hundred on your tabs, and that's gonna be Shawna Bowers. Seventy-three, four hundred. And mine, my program voluntary three K, we have three three K classrooms across the county and the majority of it is funded through a state grant that we have to apply for every year. We get roughly two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars from the state and then they tell us how much that local has to match. And currently, it's about fifty-six thousand, Gil, if I'm right, about fifty-six thousand that we have to match that. And we don't know at this time, they haven't increased it in the last several years. And so as step raises and everything are factored in, you know, that, that tends to be a problem because pretty much the grant funds all of our salaries and benefits. So any kind of training we need, any kind of materials or supplies, we try to take out of local and we are very frugal with that money. So pretty much mine is a set amount unless the state chooses to increase the grant this year.
How many pre-Ks do we have?
We have three, one at Bonner Elementary, one at Helico Elementary, and one at Madisonville Primary School.
Is there any reason we don't have more or?
Uh, there's, there are lots of qualifications, it's a competitive grant now and it's, it depends on the numbers that you have in your district, it depends on how many you have on your waiting list. There are all kinds of factors at this time, it doesn't really warrant us to request another one. I mean, the past, we have more children on the waiting list for some reason than we have had the last couple of years. So that would kind of disqualify us from getting more, but in the future, that might be something to look at. We did, we do have to have a plan, we have it in our pre-K application in case we were to get more. We talked about it at one of our CPAC community meetings, and at the time, it was, it was nowhere to house it. Like we talked about all the other elementary, like the other three elementary schools that we have it, if there were any other locations to create a new classroom and every school is full. But that could be something we look at and. Any other questions? Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Next, if you'll turn to the tab seventy-two, two fifty for technology. Last problem, you know where to start with?
Most of the changes for the technology budget was just moving routes and policies. In the data processing services, we moved around iXolirex. Like it says, it's moving, you know, technology isn't, isn't more of a hardware stuff, you should be paying for the software for increased purposes. And then beyond that, the only increase is reduced step raises. And then we also moved book systems, our A-cream software to instruction. As well, and that's the major changes. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Next, tab seventy-two, seven ten, transportation, Charlie Lee.
My budget is fairly simple compared to all the others, because transportation only has three employees. And both of my budgets go directly to truck contracts, two point two million. I have been under a smaller budget than last year. Cut back some of bus repairs, we'll be paying twenty, probably about three buses last year. So with new equipment, you have less repairs, hopefully. We don't print out brochures anymore to get out of suits at the end of the year, we do that in the packets, so that saves some money. It's a fairly simple budget. Any questions?
Charlie, with this coming year, was it not the year of the bus contract, it wasn't up or is that next?
All right, thank you, Charlie. If you look at seventy-two, one twenty, we'll combine that with seventy-three, three thirty. Jackie Gray had a family emergency, so she's not here today, but this is, this one is pretty straightforward. The only increase that you'll see to her budgets are due to any raises and increase in benefits. And then the grant funds are highlighted in blue, and this is what we were talking about when Mr. Weiss asked about grant funds. A lot of what Jackie's department is able to do is funded through grant money. If you look at our coordinated school health, all of their nurses that are in the schools, that comes, comes through her budget. And if you do have questions from that, once you look at it, or if you have some questions that you want to leave with us that she may need to elaborate on, we're happy to take those. Next would be seventy-one, two hundred and seventy-two, two twenty, both of those fall under trade servicing?
I'm not requesting any additional funding in either of those budgets. There is some shifting around of money within the budget, it's the same amount as last year. We are having to increase some of our contracted services because we had a student move in who requires transportation to the school from death in Knoxville. We already had one student going there, we had another one move in. And the contractor that's providing that transportation, of course, increased the amount. So we're planning ahead for that for next year. We've added some additional money for substitutes, hoping that next year there won't be as many substitutes needed if COVID's under control and we don't have as many teachers quarantined, so hopefully we won't need that. But we're planning ahead for that as well. Just gonna see if there are any other significant things. I did, we have, we have an employee who is considering retirement, who is at the high end of the pay scale within my department, and if that person decides to retire, I would like to change that position to a district-wide special ed coach, similar to how we have the reading coach and the math coach in the system. I'd like to have a special ed coach who can roll around and help the teachers really learn how to use the online programs that we have and help our kids do better in special ed. And it's part of our district plan as well to help try to improve our reading and math scores and graduation rates among our special ed students. So if all that falls in line, I would be able to add a special ed coach for the district without increasing our budget at all. Remain the same as last year.
So if someone in the community is new, would make the same for someone on the high end?
Yeah, so there would be savings there, and that's how we distributed, Gil knows how that. We're looking at several, well, not several, there are possibilities that several of our most experienced people may retire next year. And of course, if that happens, y'all know the plan every year for the last couple of years has been to put any savings we have in a lot of our purchase buses. And so to get that bus looking up in money, so that's what we would do with the savings within our departments. Just try to lump that together to purchase buses every year.
I have another question, that was, I also have a federal budget, this is my local special ed budget and we have a federal special ed budget, that's what we're talking about when we get to that section.
Thank you. Okay, next, two tabs that fall into Phillip Carroll, seventy-two, six, ten, and seventy-two, six, twenty.
Good evening, family. Hope everybody's had a great day today. So as you can see, we do have our standard increase due to step raises, as everybody else has. Our increase in water testing, that was put into seventy-two, sixteen, three ninety-nine. That is for our, every other year, water testing, or actually, that one is for our annual water treatment at Coke Creek Elementary School. And for an additional pest control for treating termites, we've got termites that we have to maintain systems for, I think now at four or five locations. And that's what that is. Any questions on that? And for anybody that's saving money and not adding money, then I'm taking all of that. That's my plan, right? Seventy-two, six, twenty, maintenance of plant, again, increases due to step raises. One thing that we did notice, and I don't know if you've got the sheet that's got everything on it, that's the actual Excel spreadsheet that's got all the investment worksheet options over on the right hand side or in the reeds. So all of that was taken out due to the S R two O and three O funding, we're able to, still waiting approval, I reckon from this in the end, I think on all of that. So hopefully, all that gets approved and then we'll be able to do a lot of great things this year in our main study, through that S R funding. Increase in other supplies in four ninety-nine to keep up with our ever-changing work order system. With upgrades and upkeep, we need the micromane and the chronos, looking at ten thousand dollars of an increase in that. The last one, increase in vehicle lease, we've got three vehicles that we're gonna try to replace this year. Two in the maintenance department, one in transportation, and so that's what that increase is. We've mandated and mandated and mandated these vehicles as long as we possibly could and now would be a great time to try to move those forward if we can, so. Is that the only three or four that we have?
Can I ask a question on that, please? Right, I don't know if this is a fact or a hot, but they were telling me that another system leases and gets a brand-new vehicle at cheaper cost for the Ford, what is that, what are they talking about?
I have no idea, when, when we started this, see, it's been three years, we're just rolling off, has it been five? It's been, oh, it's been, has it been three or five, Gil? Three? I think the fourth.
It's been five.
It's been five, because it was right after when I first came, that we was able, Ms. Hicks came to us and started it with the county vehicles, with sheriff's cars, and brought our attention and we said, well, hey, well, we'll get on board with that. I was told then that they had checked before, they had checked with other places and nobody wanted to do anything at that particular point in time. And so this group came forward and said, hey, we'll do it for you. And that's how we got involved with the Dodge and with going this route, and I think it's through the bank port, is who, is who does actual leasing. And they was the only ones that would fund it since then, and I reckon they have said that, hey, we'll do other items now. But I think it's, it's a matter of ease, and I don't know about cost-wise, because I've only been directed to go through Dodge. So that's where I stay.
They were just telling me that they traded like every year or two, unless I get a new vehicle for the same money.
Right.
It's perpetual, that's through the Ford dealership and sweep walk. I don't know, but just saying, I'm just proposing that question.
Absolutely.
You answer.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, I can give you remaining one-twenty-one. Seventy-one, one-hundred, if we look at that tab, the regular instruction. One thing that we want to say for sure, to point out, is that is where the textbooks are located. That's always the million-dollar topic of discussion. All of the money that was given for textbooks is being spent for textbooks. We spent one half last year and the remaining half was put into this budget. We did that in two insolvent. So for anybody that asks, that is exactly where the money went. The only increase to this one, of course, like the others you've heard, is the step raise and the two percent for professional and the step raise for non-professional. And the question was asked, Mr. Ed will ask about that particular example. We always put in to the budget what it would cost to do both and what it would cost to do one. The reason that you only see the step for non-professional in this particular budget is because without going into fund balance, it would not have been a balanced budget. Now, that's something that you can discuss if you wanted to do that. That's something that you want to add into this budget. But the reason that we listed in parentheses that it's only two percent in step for professional is because for this particular budget to balance without going into fund balance, we did not have the funds to give both to the non-professionals. And again, that's something that you can discuss. We just wanted to explain that we always present them both ways. And then depending on how the budget laid out, we decide which to propose and then get that for the schedule.
So what you're saying is that non-funded part was not part of this budget?
Correct.
So it would roughly be if we decided to give the two percent around thirty-three thousand five hundred or something like that?
Yeah, if you got that sheet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
And?
You mean ninety-four thousand, right? I'm looking at what's on here for non-professional.
No.
Step and two percent?
Yeah, but the step raises include that seventy-seven. So if you added two percent, it'd be seventeen thousand five fifty-eight, is that right?
Yeah, I understand that, right.
This is for the step raise. This is with them both, right?
That's the both, yes.
Yeah, the ninety-four's with both.
Ninety-four, what I'm saying.
So the difference is seventeen thousand five fifty-eight to seventy-two. And then the food service difference is eighteen thousand nine oh one eighty-nine.
Twenty-six thousand.
Thirty-three, four sixty, sixty-one.
I've got this, maybe try to give them my.
Nine and seventeen is thirty-three.
Or my, my, I must turn it on my phone while I go.
Hard workers like everybody else. Absolutely, and that's why I wanted to point that out.
Oh, yeah, thirty-six, thank you.
It's not negating anybody's contribution or the work that they do. It's just, you know, rather making another work to present to you a balanced budget without making cuts elsewhere. That's the way that we laid it out. But it's definitely, it by no means means that anyone works any less than anyone else. And then, and of course, you can go back and discuss, you know, if you choose to do that, if you want us to do that, that's fine, too. I just wanted to point that out since the question has been brought to your attention.
So you're, you're saying if, if we approve this ninety-four thousand, it will come out of the fund balance, that's the five-point-six-four fund balance? Okay? So that fund balance will go down by ninety-four thousand?
Yes, because I will tell you, and I will say that about all these individuals sitting around this room. They have, and we talked about it, and y'all think it'd be crazy that they're gonna put on my tombstone, because we won't make you, we won't make you suffer, but you might, no, we won't make you miserable, but you might have to suffer. Because we have really tried hard to not add anything. We let them make a wish list, and everybody can really shoot for the moon, but when we look at the numbers, it's just not there. So we went back and took that stuff out. There are a lot of things that these people would like to have and that their partners deserve and that I wish we could give. I know we all did, but we just didn't have the money. So we took out anything that just really was not, it's, it's bare bones.
So?
So thirty-six thousand four, I'm sorry, don't go ahead.
So if I understand this, we're balanced budget without this, with this, then we're ninety-four thousand, right out of a hundred thousand dollars, under a balanced budget?
No, thirty-six thousand four hundred and something.
Is that right, Gail? It would just be the difference, right, between the two?
Yeah, that's kind of, yeah, that's a balanced budget, not a balanced budget.
An extra thirty-six thousand.
Something's gonna cost us about twenty-six thousand dollars to do the step and two percent for food and services, not professionals. I understand, I was trying to work with that. Thirty-six thousand, you say twenty-six thousand? I'm leaving, I'm adding seventeen and nine, and I'm getting twenty-six. That's the ballpark, leave.
And like I say, I'm trying to do it on my calculator and I'm not having very good.
Well, where's the fund balance coming in this? If we're either balanced or we're not, the fund balance, we're above what the state requires us to have by a million bucks or unbalanced.
Three, three percent is the recommended.
Recommended, not required.
Yes, but, um, three percent. We are, we were at five-point-six-four, I believe it was, based on this budget presented as is.
Let, let me intervene for just a second. Just one, please. You've got the right concept, but, there's a but that goes in. This right here, okay. If we have a good year and we collect all of our revenue this year and extend everything we say we're gonna extend, this is what our estimated fund balance will be at year-end. However, if we do not collect all of our revenue, it's not gonna be two-point-five. We'll be going into fund balance this year, which means this will automatically decrease when next year starts. We might not start out with five-point-six-four. We might start out with four. We don't, we're not real sure. All this is estimated because it's still able.
Let me ask you this, that forty-four million there, the local part of that, which is primarily property tax, what percent of property tax collection did we base this forty-four million on? Do you know? Eighty percent, ninety, ninety-two percent, what?
Uh, ninety-two percent.
Is what we're basing that on then? So if we get, if we don't get ninety-two percent, we are going into fund balance, you mean?
Yes.
Okay?
So the, this, these three numbers are based on if we receive all of our funds and we spend all of our funds. If we don't spend all of our funds at year-end, that will increase our fund balance. So you've got two, two things going at the same time.
Question?
Yes.
The state recommends that we have three percent. It's not mandatory, so, but if we dip below that, then we have to, we have to ask permission from the state to allow us to go through, uh, below three percent. That is correct, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so with this money, if we don't collect our money, is it to the point where we would have to ask the state for permission to go below our fund balance?
Yes, and they may or may not approve it. One year that did happen, they did not approve our budget because we were going into fund balance too much. And we had to go back and readjust our budget.
The next question is, how close are we on this tax though? Because we're getting close to the end of the year. Do you have an idea how close we are to this?
Last month, we were eighty-two percent. The trustee has not closed March, the month of March yet. So hopefully by Thursday night, when we have our board meetings, I'll have, hopefully they'll be closed and I'll give you another day. I'll have numbers by then.
So we're close to, we're close to having asked permission to, if we don't collect the money, we think?
It's possible.
With all these closures this past year?
It's possible.
Karen, you're gonna feel what we are fighting for?
I don't, I don't work it out, but I'm sorry.
Is sales tax running high?
Yes, sales tax is doing great. We're collecting more money on sales tax. Last year was a great year and this year so far has been even better than last year, so.
Is that an arduous task to try to get permission from the state as that arm twist and goes on? Or is that pretty normal operating procedure?
You can go into fund balance to balance your budget, but it's very rare that, we don't have to have a zero balance every year. We've only, we've only done that last year and this year. The year before last, they didn't, they didn't approve our budget. They only had to like make adjustments. So I, it's hard to say.
You need a, you need something on this right now? In other words, we're, we're gonna need it before Thursday night though, right? We might as well do it now. I know we can't vote, we can do it thumbs up, thumbs down, I think.
Can, can I ask a question before we do that, John? Or you already started?
No, go ahead.
The two percent we're required to give by the state, the step raises, and we talked about this last year, about step raises too, that we gave them last year, is that not correct? Well, I think at that time, we talked about we may not be able to give them next year. That was a one-time thing. I don't know, I'm just, I'm asking this question, is it correct? If you took off that part, even if we don't get the taxes, would that drive us over the cliff, Gail?
Can I say that one more time?
Step, listen, I'm not, I'm not proposing, I'm just asking a question. If we, I know we talked last year, we was giving the step raises and we didn't know if we was gonna be able to give them in the future or not, based on the, the, our economy. So if you took off, was it a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars total? Or is that just professionals? That's two of them, that's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that's two-hundred-and-sixty-something thousand dollars, it looks like off the top of my head. If that's not there, would that drive us into the fund, fund balance if we didn't collect our taxes? Did I say that clearly?
When you have a budget this large, a hundred and seventy-five thousand really doesn't put a dent in much. I will say that one year we didn't give step raises and it was very difficult for me and Sandra to get caught back up on that. And there was a couple of instances where we didn't give them and then the next year we went and gave them
To you?
The step, and then the step that they missed. And we had a few people that slipped through the cracks and we had to re-figure their salaries. And even this past year, we were still fixing stuff, and that's four years ago.
So you're, you're saying, yeah, the step raises, if we push the balance?
Uh, yes, I agree. And as far as the two percent goes, I know in prior administrations, a step and two percent was ideal. We don't have to give the step and two percent because I know the state says two percent, but we have more positions allotted than we get BEP funding for. So there's been a couple of years where we've given one-point-seven percent. It hasn't been quite two percent. But for this budget, we just went ahead and put in two percent because we have no idea what our BEP funding is gonna be. And we won't have final numbers till July.
I think it was last year, we were giving it like a one percent and one-point-seven-five and two percent. But that is, that is.
So what we're short is twenty-six thousand four sixty, sixty-one, is that right? One, is that what you figured? And an extra ten thousand? Yeah, twenty-six thousand four sixty, sixty-one is what we're short, but not giving everybody their two percent.
So Gail, you will understand more of a third than I, percentage wise, where we are in tax revenue. And our, our target is ninety-two percent. And currently, we're at eighty-two percent.
Our budget at ninety-two percent of our total collective, which we would have to collect a hundred percent of that in, in this budget.
Do you have any field, Gail, as to what, in both the years, probably standard percentage wise at this point, most years?
Most years were over ninety percent.
So we're running behind at this point?
We are.
Do we have the penalty for when they pay a penalty? Do we get that or does that go into somewhere else?
No, it, it all comes into our budget.
So if they, they pay their taxes like, because they are paying them now, they have to pay a penalty, so we get the tax plus the penalty?
It's collected and broken up the same percentages as we would.
Gail, would that stimulus package, would that help someone?
I hope so, if people come to deal.
Yeah, if they pay the taxes.
On the stimulus? You're talking about S R fund?
You're talking about S R fund? You're talking about the stimulus that people got in their pocket?
The, uh, the S R fund?
No, that won't help our revenue. That'll help our district in the, the needs that we have, but as far as bringing in revenue.
Can we plan on putting any in and then Gail will come back and let us know something at the workshop? Can we do that? Can we know more?
Thank you. Well, and I, if, any changes that you want done before we leave, just let me know and I can add them to the budget and present it to you. Anything that you increase, we're either gonna be going into fund balance or we'll have to decrease somewhere else to have a zero balance. We don't have to have a zero balance, but we can go into fund balance.
Alright, does everyone agree with what Sharon said? Say that again, Sharon.
And just go ahead and add this into the budget and Gail will come back during the workshop and let us know more about the.
You mean, you mean Thursday night?
Yes.
Okay, leave me, okay. Anyone disagree with that doing that? Okay? You need anything else or you're, you're gonna?
No. And just, just something I'll add that goes to what you were talking, talking about with, you know, you think about the S R money and the three-point-O, I'll go ahead and say we're going to meet with you guys about that, try to set up a date and do a workshop about that as well. We want to come to you with a proposal for how it is suggested to us that it be spent. Some things are strongly recommended, some are recommended and then others are, you know, basically, you can come up with something and see if you can, if you can get it passed. But just to show you how tight that budget is, you think about how many things we took out of especially maintenance and operations just to get to this point where we're presenting some of the balance to you tonight. That's taking tons of things out, but normally we would have to be taking into account that we're hoping that we get approved through S R, which in the long run helps us, because you know, we don't know if we end up coming, with our revenues not coming in like we hope, we have to plan for next year because obviously that's, you know, that's what you have to look at. You have to look down the road.
Can I ask a question, please? I don't know if this, if this or not, but it had been talked before about getting our teacher, number of teachers down to the B E P requirement that had been talked about. What is the plan there? People that retire, are they gonna be replaced? What, what's, what's the plan? How will that affect our budget if they do retire? Are you gonna replace them or not?
That's something that, that's something that we're actually looking at. We've been already working on the numbers and the principals are aware. And I will say kudos to them. They have been on board with understanding how tight we are and recognizing that though, I love having three or four additional teachers when we, when we could do that, if you were able to do that, it's just not possible in situations where we're so tight. So we've tried, there's already been some changes that we've made to lower those numbers and get them closer. High school is where it's harder, obviously, because you have the different certifications you have to deal with. But as people are retiring, we're gonna look at now transferring people, allowing them, you know, some people want to transfer anyway. We try to match those up if somebody wants to go to another area and gives us a couple of choices and that school's enrollment is up and the school they're at is down, we may move them into one of those other positions. So movement from within is the goal. We don't want to have to get rid of anybody, obviously. But we're definitely not looking to replace unnecessarily.
That's people retired. The next question, this two percent monies is spread around to above B E P. We have to cover that money. That, that's correct, isn't it? Okay, that comes from local monies. With that question I just posed right there, how would that affect it? If, if we do lower this number down to B E P numbers and we don't have to use those local monies, can it be applied to this maybe need? Did I ask that correctly again, Gail? That just seems worse, if you may.
In theory, yes. However, this is April, we have the summer to go. We won't have final numbers until July. So we don't, we don't even really have a concrete number in B E P funds to tell you, well, we can only give one-point-seven percent. The year we done that, we didn't. The year we done that, we didn't pass the budget till October. So, um, now it is state, the controller state recommended is the law that we're supposed to have a budget passed by June first, even though we don't have any, any, hard numbers yet. If since our salaries are more than we get in BEP funds, if it comes to July, August, September, we have people retire or quit and go somewhere else, and we don't replace them, then yes, we will have more salary funds BEP-wise to distribute that would not eat at our level. Is that what your question was?
Yes.
And that is the goal of us trying to do that, trying to get closer to it every now. Now, I will say, and I didn't, I didn't know this, I knew it was obviously out of alignment, but when I was in Nashville last week, um, a gentleman got up and spoke, and his plea was for the BEP formula to actually change, and the first time I heard somebody argue that, he said it's two thousand and two is the last time that that was adjusted. So we're operating off of a formula almost twenty years old. Uh, so I mean, even though we say we're over, when you talk about realistically, you know, it's, it's definitely not comfortable, uh, even where we are, even having some positions over. Uh, some of those positions will be considered like they're assistant principals. And you know what our principals have to do, and what they have to delegate to assistant principals. And you know, when you look at those types of things, and you realize how out of line that formula is, it's really hard to operate based just solely on that. And that's why districts like us, a lot of them are over more than we are. We just have to, we're just so tight, money-wise.
So last year, we didn't give the professionals a two percent raise, but we gave them a little bit. But we gave our non-professionals just the step raise last year, right?
Yes.
No percentage raise?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you know, we, I mean, it's different. It seems like every year, you know, we have to decide how to do it based on how the money-
One, other, or both?
So, exactly. Okay, so we'll figure that in, and then have that information for you.
I ask another, real question, I hope, do you have any feel? And I assume we're talking about, uh, elementary area, how many timers do we have?
Um, at this point, we've actually, we've, we've had three, I've heard of a fourth one, maybe, but that's not official, it's not been turned in. So we've had three, and we've we've used that money.
Well, I, I know that's, because we don't want to take what we about.
Yep. And that, I mean, it, it really is, and, and that's why I say, I mean, I give kudos to everybody here that worked so hard on their budget, and the principals for being understanding, you know, we've just said, it's just, I mean, it's tough times financially, when you look at everything that we're having to do, and and what we try to do every day with the money that we have.
It's, it's definitely frustrating, I'll, even on, on my end, that it's, it's not fair, it's not.
Are, are we hurt more than most systems because we have twelve different buildings that's spread out, uh, through the BEP versus those that as most of our students in one or two or three buildings? Are we hurt by the BEP, haven't heard that talked about?
Um.
The way the formula works out?
I, I haven't heard it explained that way, and it doesn't mean that that's not the case. Um, obviously, you know, your operating expenses for every additional facility you have, you know, that, that is an increase, it's not just a, it's not just straight across the board. Um, but as far as the BEP, based on the number of buildings, I haven't heard that, you still have the same class size recommendations, high school has a certain, middle school, elementary?
We allow so many teachers per student, and, uh, I believe it gets over to that, and I can explain it as it was explained to me.
Right. Okay, any other discussion on that? If not, uh, seventy-one, one fifty, alternative instruction. If you look at that tab, the only increase you see there is the salary and benefits, and benefit expense. So no additional money being requested for that particular item. Attendance seventy-two, one-ten tab. Again, the only change you'll see there is the increase in pay and benefits. And you've heard a lot of that tonight, so we weren't playing, we said no real Seventy-two, one-thirty, that's another standard support, if you look at that tab. We don't have a hard number on the Safe School Act grant money. Um, when we do give that, we can, we will obviously amend the budget to include those hard numbers, and this is what goes paper, SROs in the schools. The budget for them is the same in this budget. Now, if county commission does decide to give a raise to the officers, we would have to amend the budget at a later date to accommodate for that, we did not put that in. And there's really, there was no significant change to that, other than in the last year's budget, um, when people retire or left for whatever reason, they would be replaced, that's what Claire was talking about earlier, it would replace someone who came in on lower on the pay scale, so that did give a little bit of savings in this particular area, but other than that, no real changes to this budget. Any questions on that? Okay, seventy-two, two-ten, regular instruction. There wasn't much that changed on this one as well, uh, we did budget for twelve librarians this year, and we're instead paying for ten librarians and a general purpose aid. We moved the book system software payment from technology budget to here. And then seventy-two, ten, one oh five, increase to the salary increases, and a decrease in CTE federal funding, and that was noted back in the CTE budget. So the portion that they're no longer paying is off their every salary, is lifted here. And then this is the, the very last bullet, five thousand dollars from the director's budget was moved here for travel for work-based learning teachers. And these are the teachers that I told you the travel would go up a little based on the fact that they had not, at this point, turned in their travel expenses, so we'll be paying those now.
What do they have travel expenses if we have vehicles?
Well, that was the issue, we, we drive the vehicles, and we found that a lot of people, because of the location where they live and work, it was counterproductive for them to have to come here and get a vehicle every day when they were traveling to areas way outside the county, so they just were not getting paid. And we just didn't feel like it was fair to them, even though we offered that, we didn't feel like it was fair to them not to be compensated for doing work-based learning if they were not getting vehicles and not turning in travel. Now, again, there's no guarantee that we'll use, you know, all of this, but we had to put it, we wanted to put it in there so that we can accommodate anybody who did turn in travel. The cars are still available for anybody that wants to use them.
All right, seventy-two, two-ten, that's, that's that's where you are, right? Aren't you listed under seventy-two, two-ten? She is?
Yes.
Okay. I've had some folks talk to me about Dr. Windsor's salary. Uh, and you know, as, as we talked about hiring uh, directors before, you know, you hire administrative people anyway, based on degree and also experience. And, and, and Dr. McClendon, we hired her, and she had doctor, just as Dr. Windsor does, but you know, Dr. McClendon had, did not have the same administrative experience, she was a early childhood director, I think, in a large system. And Dr. Windsor's been everything from assistant principal to principal assistant director. And, um, um, anyway, um, I think, let's talk about her salary in terms of, do we want it to be the same as we are paying Dr. McClendon, which it is in this budget right here? Uh, if you haven't looked at it, I did. Or do we wanna, uh, make it a little bit more? And this is for starting January, uh, July one.
Okay.
This is the next year's budget, starting July one. So I'd like to have a little feedback from what you think.
So what do we have budgeted in?
She is on seventy-two, two-ten, the second page, and you'll see where it says, um, uh, she's the very last page.
Okay, I see her.
You see it there? Uh, she's budgeted for one oh, one hundred and two thousand, seven sixty-five, which I think that's what Dr. McClendon made, and that's the uh, a hundred thousand plus the two percent makes it, is what that is.
I can observe that, uh, we've eliminated the assistant director position, because I assume we're responsible for it. Now, whether we can do this or not, I certainly think should be considered increasing our compensation sums, you're just trying to do two jobs at one time. And we've cut ninety thousand dollars out of our budget. I'm letting you through such a direct position.
Anyone else, feedback? And, and I realize what this will do, Gail, uh, to the balance, budget. But, you know, this is, I think this is something we need to, we need to think about. This, this is like a preacher preaching on giving money, you know, and no one wants to talk about it.
It was budgeted, it was budgeted, right, it is budgeted in at the one oh two.
Yes, it's, it's, that's, that's what it is, budgeted right now, you know.
And so you're asking, should we increase it?
Yes, based on, based on qualifications.
And what would that be?
And what she has done.
For what dollar amount are we looking at?
Uh, I want more to do something. Uh, and again, as, as Juan says, uh, you know, doing two jobs. Well, I've got a number in my head, but you know, I, I don't know, maybe you haven't had time to think about it, and we wanna do something else, but, uh, I would recommend taking that one oh two, seven six five to a hundred and fifteen thousand. That would be about a, uh, something twelve, a little over twelve thousand increase.
Let me add in right here. We're in a budget crunch right here, and, uh, director we had in place was this one oh two. Okay? Uh, as of right now, we have, uh, an interim director, okay? You're proposing a year's salary.
Oh, so what's your point? I, I missed the point.
That is the point, that is the point right there, you're proposing a year's salary, we have an interim right now, and the one with, uh, the, the document we had in place was giving one oh two, and I understand what you're saying, but, uh, this position is not being hired full-time, so how can we give a, a raise on that? Specifically talking about the budget crunch we're under right now?
No, I don't see why we couldn't, uh, you know, based on all I had, the facts that I stated, maybe I didn't state enough, but that's just my opinion, I'll put it that way.
Saving eighty something thousand, boy.
Sorry.
Or, Mr. Chairman, are we saving eighty something thousand?
We're not.
Sorry.
But we didn't have to budget for it yet, but.
That's not a lot, twenty thousand dollars, but a twenty, twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand, that's a pretty good jump until we get on down the road, uh, here, in my opinion.
Not twenty-two, I, I said a hundred and fifteen.
I understand that.
One oh two, that's a little over twelve thousand.
He said that we're paying, uh, her position right now pays eighty?
I think, I, I think it's that.
Ninety, ninety.
I think it's ninety, correct.
That's pretty good, twelve thousand dollar raise is a pretty good way, but, but I'll bet.
Just saying, so if you did something like that, and if you did the two percent raise for the others, you're looking at thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, some odd cents that Gail would have to add to the budget. Right?
Something along that.
Because you say that's about twelve thousand, so.
Anybody else? Do you hear a suggestion?
Another suggestion, I would think, is have Gail add it in with the other, and let us look at the budget. Thursday, like she's adding in that other twenty-six thousand.
You bet, that's, that's a good point, thank you. Uh, anybody else? Anyone disagree then with what Joe said, to do it, as we did the other, and we'll talk about it again Thursday night?
Or you say Joe?
Add it in with the other twenty-six thousand, let us look at it in the budget, like we're adding in the other two percent.
And, uh, what, uh, the
Hundred and fifteen.
Two thousand or the hundred and fifteen?
The hundred and fifteen. And I know what you're saying, you know, she's an intern right now, but if, you know, when we go to look for a director, you know, it would be in the budget, we wouldn't have to do no amendments.
So what you're saying is, you said be in the budget, so the next director automatically Christie or whoever would automatically be one fifteen, it's in the budget?
Well, no, not directly.
Because the person gets it on contract.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's what the budget would have in there.
It would have the one fifteen in there, whether it was Christie or not, and if it was somebody, I mean, different coming in or something, depending on what experiences they had, we might not do the one fifteen. Because he was saying because of experience, and her having her doctor.
Well, I would disagree with, uh, with adding it in there right now, because we don't know if that's something that you want to bring up in the regular meeting where it's voted on, then I could agree with that. But, uh, we're suggesting to do something that we're not allowed to vote, uh, even vote on right now. We're allowed to put something in there that technically I don't see, uh, being allowed to do in, in, into it. If you want to raise it Thursday, where it's technically fine, go for it.
I was just thinking, so we could see the figures, because we, that, that don't mean we approve it with it, I mean, Thursday, we can pull it back out or whatever, but to see the figures, and it's in there, if it does get approved, and then whoever gets it, then there's adjustments, so say for instance, if she got it, then we wouldn't have to do no budget amendments. If she, if she didn't get it, then we'd have to relook at everything.
Is that not figures Gail can have on, on the side note, just like these other?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for.
Without handing it into the budget.
That's what I'm asking for.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree with it.
You, you, you're gonna have to tell me a little bit more about what you want. Anything that we add into the budget will be going into fund balance. So I will have to prepare two budgets for Thursday night, for you to vote on. Either you vote on the one that is zero balance that we have tonight, or you vote on the other one that has the increases in one end of that balance. Because there's nowhere to decrease the budget. Does that make sense?
I think it's, I think that she deserves it, isn't it, I don't mind mine, she deserves it. But we've got people in again, twenty-two thousand dollars a year, my first income would be there. You know, I do agree, just maybe she should make more money. You know, I do agree, just maybe she should make more money. Definitely. Um, you know, twenty-two thousand dollars a year, it's not a lot of money.
Anybody else not hurt, concerned?
I would go ahead. Hurt, um, and like Gail did. They did, they'll make whatever, but and it's ain't nothing against, but I can't see not giving the non-professional zero and giving her a twelve thousand dollar raise. I don't think that would fly too well.
Well, I would propose the nine.
No, no, and that's what I'm saying.
Sure.
You know, if, if we're gonna give twelve thousand or a little over whatever, then we definitely need to consider the two percent.
I agree.
A two percent ain't a very big raise.
All right, we didn't agree with them with what Joe said. We're not saying so, say something now.
Does that make, you say you wanted to make that two, uh, budgets?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, do you need anything else, Gail?
No.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you, but I needed to, I thought I'd do it that time.
Okay, seventy-two, three, one, zero. Will be the next time for education. And to this, you will see the only additions were the background text. That was added to five ninety-nine. Reimbursement for that, and then added funds to the trustees commission. So nothing no major changes to that particular budget.
This, uh, uh, op, uh, op, operating lease payments for the director of school, was that not covered, uh, in these other leases we have?
Where you're at.
Is that what that means? That's number, uh, seventy-two, three, twenty, nine, three, thirty. One forty-one down there, that's all.
That is copier leases.
It's what?
Copier leases.
Thank you.
Tab seventy-two, three, twenty, director of schools. The only increases that you see there are due to the raises. And then Dr. McPlandon was kept in this particular budget until the payout is complete. Tab seventy-two, four-ten, office of the principal. To this particular budget, line three forty-nine, we added a premium of student packets. And those are the packets that go home with students at the beginning of the year. The ones that they completed, returning anything that can't be done online, we do have to send home. And the only other increases you'll see there are due to the raises. I don't know why, but I think this is one of the most exciting ones. Cause we have talked about this for years, in fact, and with us, and I know that I've heard you say it time and time again, we need to take care of everything. We've not done a very good job of that. So we have added a line item for capital, capital improvements, so that when we are able to add money to this particular area, it allows us to plan for maintenance of facilities now and future projects. Because as you know, we are, we operate under a rock from paper to paper principle in a lot of situations, I'm afraid. So we want to get away from that and be able to prepare for down the road. Um, and have some foresight in planning and maintaining our schools and our, the different projects that we have.
And I've heard you think from training, I guess. We don't know when you're coming back.
Yeah, they're, they're finished, uh, I got an email from Miss Nancy, uh, this week, and she said that, that they're almost done. They hope to be completed, uh, by the end of the month.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, any questions on that? I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Schreiber, still under federal caution.
All right, like several of the departments, we are budgeting, uh, with what we've seen will be level funding from last year, so not many changes. Uh, we do not have our final allocations yet, but we have been told to expect what we got last year. Um, and just to remind you, with federal programs, we can't do anything that offsets what the VEP requires. So those of you that have been around since Dan Slaper was here doing this job, he would always say that state and local funds pay for the cake, we have to only pay for icing. We can't pay for the cake, uh, because federal funds cannot supplant what state and local funds are required to provide. So we do supplemental activities such as the response to intervention programs in all of our schools. Uh, we pay for teachers and teaching assistants to provide extra help for students who are struggling in reading and in math. We pay for a lot of the programs that are used to help students who are struggling in reading and math. Um, so that's, the majority of our money just goes to paying salaries and for supplemental curriculum or resources for students. So starting with Title One, um, that's our biggest project. We have seven Title One schools in the districts now. All of our elementary schools plus Teleco Junior High. Sometimes that changes if we have a school that goes, uh, to a higher poverty rate, and some of our Title One schools will have to pick up the school in Title One. We haven't done that in probably ten years. And I'll let you look through and let me know what questions you have. I will mention the consolidated funding application. Uh, that is where we take a little bit of money out of each of the titles and put it into one pot. And that's how I'm paid, and that's how Colleen, our bookkeeper, is paid, and that's how part of her Johansson's salary is paid. And what that does, it just allows us to work on any federal program out of that one pot, so we don't have to keep up with a percentage of our time for each specific activity.
In your binder, what she's referring to, consolidated admin, is the first one, is the one forty-two, oh, oh, oh. Budget seventy-two, one, oh, that's where it starts out. And that's what she's talking about, that her other budgets help pay and support this budget. And the next one she was referring to is the Title One budget, that is the one forty-two, one, oh, eight, that's behind it.
We, while this is in our budget, it totally funded the federal fund, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Say that again, Lon, please. This is on our budget, but it totally funded the federal fund coming, I'm over. Yeah, Leanne, you said there something a minute ago, and I'm, I'm sure that's done, but we were told earlier that, uh, whoever it was that, that, that we brought on board to get a grant, that his salary would be paid out of the grant itself.
Correct.
That is correct, then it, I don't, then I don't understand, uh, uh, you take out of each, which is okay, I'm sure, but...
Yeah, that's a separate, completely separate grant, so that wouldn't be under the federal programs, the Department of, the US Department of Ed. That's a, a grant through the Department of Justice, I believe. Uh, Department of Defense, I think. Yeah, yeah, that would be, it's, it's also a federal fund, but it's separate from the Department of Education, yeah, correct, please.
Right. So as we have the field increasing funds in the Department of Education, our budget goes up, up a little.
Yes. So the way this is all calculated for all the federal projects, it's based on our population and our poverty rates and our enrollment in the school system. So it fluctuates a little bit each year. If our poverty goes up at the county, then we'll get additional Title One fund. If it goes down, we'll get a reduced amount of Title One fund. Sometimes we see if there's a new federal initiative, they'll pull from one of these and our allocation will go down. That's happened several times in my career, uh, where there's been a push for school safety, or a push for school nutrition, or something else, that, you know, some initiative, and they pull a little bit of out of Title One, or a little bit out of Title Two, and we get a reduced allocation. Uh, because like most of us, there's one big pot, so if you pay too much for one, one thing, you lose for another thing, but, um, what, what we expect this year is that they're just gonna give us the same amount of money they gave us last year. We know our enrollment is down a little bit, but that's a national issue. So I think they're working hard to just keep us at level funding this year, which is what we need. I mean, the majority of this money pays for people. And so we do our very best to preserve all of our positions. We don't want to lose any of our people. We always need more people and not less, so, um, hopefully we'll get at least what we got last year. And that's what I expect, I mean, that's been the, that's been the expectation for, since they started planning our budget for next year. And we, we, we try very hard to be as conservative as possible with what we spend, just in case there's a big cut. You know, we don't want to have to lose any of our people, so we try to be very careful with spending from year to year, so that we have a little bit of a cushion just in case we can plan, you know, for them to cut. I think two years ago, they cut the Title Two fund by about twenty percent, which was a big hit. Uh, so because we've been frugal, we were able to absorb that, and then it went back up, so we're okay there. We're always expecting, you know, to take a little bit of a hit, just because we don't know. But I'm sure it depends on the federal revenues, just like we, our local money depends on our local revenue too. Any other question? Thank you.
Next, we'll ask Mr. Ferguson to come up.
Um, I, I get a one forty-two federal, uh, budget each year as well. As you guys know by law, the state and local, uh, funds are required to provide special ed services to our students and kids. But then the federal government also gives us additional funding that, like Leanne said, has to be icing on that cake. So it really just goes along to, uh, add to the program that we're required to provide through my one forty-one budget that I talked about earlier. So we do get some funding, it's the smaller budget, straight from the federal government, and all has to be spent on special ed, uh, activities, of course. And just like Leanne said, the final allocations have not been sent down to us yet, but we did get a preliminary allocation today. And what we budgeted, Gail, we did a good job with this, I'm so pleased. We, what we budgeted or proposed is one million ninety-seven thousand, and the preliminary allocation is one million ninety-eight thousand. So it looks like we're gonna be in good shape on, uh, this one forty-two budget. This only provides, uh, the salaries for six special ed teachers. We have forty-one total in the county. This pays for six of our special ed teachers, and there's, uh, benefits. Uh, we have thirty-nine total full-time special ed assistants in the county. This budget pays for seventeen of those, and also we have fifteen total part-time aides in the system. This pays for one part-time assistant. And then the rest is, uh, basically others, uh, just the benefits, you can see on there. Uh, the other salaries and wages is money we have to set aside for summer programming. Um, no, wait, sorry, this, this, on this, uh, sheet, the one forty-two, the other salaries and wages is actually just a holding place. You'll see that this, on this current year, the twenty-twenty-one year, the federal government sent us twenty-five thousand dollars, but we just have to hold it. It's weird, we got it for this year. It's for, um, compensatory services only. And what that means is back when we closed in March through the rest of the year due to COVID, if our district had provided any mandatory educational services to Gen Ed kids, which we did not, but if we had mandatory services and we denied services to special ed students, we're supposed to use this twenty-five thousand dollars that they gave us this year to make up for those services. So since we didn't have any cert, mandatory services, right now they just got us holding that money. I'm hoping they will let us keep it, but I don't know, they may take that back. So we did not budget for that next year in that line item, one eighty-nine. We just put it back to zero, cause it's just in holding right now. Um, also, I have a one forty-two federal pre-K budget. I don't know where that might be, in fact, it's nine eleven.
It's behind nine oh one.
Okay, behind nine oh one. The federal government also sends us a little bitty, uh, pocket of money to add to the pre-K services that we provide in the county. We are a, we paid for out of our one forty-one budget, two blended pre-K classes. Those are at Madisonville Primary School, and they are made up, they're in addition to Shawna. So the one Shawna talked about, we have three reticular ed pre-K classes. We also have two special ed pre-K classes at Madisonville Primary. But this money is only, um, thirty-five thousand, so it pays, it has paid for a portion of one full-time aide salary in that classroom. Next year, we're shifting it over to paper to part-time. It will cover two part-time, uh, aides, so each of those classrooms will have a part-time aide out of this, um, money. The preliminary allocation for next year came in, and it is ninety-four dollars more than they gave us last year, which is nothing. But it, it's something, I mean, it's a little something. But, um, so I'm real pleased with the way our one forty-two special ed budget's on, with what, of the options are. Cause normally we get cuts every year, but they kind of helped us quite a bit this year. Does anyone have any questions about the one forty-two budgets? First, I should have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, in CMTB, the federal, um, program is called, it's Perkins Five. It's very specific on what you can spend that money on. Um, so for example, a percentage has to go to, uh, professional development. Um, we have, um, we have monies we have to put in for some of our, our CTSOs, travel, um, and, um, we have, obviously, equipment is our biggest expense within that. Um, so to give you an idea of what we're trying to do with the amount of money that we have been allocated, um, this year, the state sent us an allocation of around a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. It's about a thirty-six hundred dollar cost. We somehow managed to take that money and spread it out, um, over approximately twenty different programs of studies in three high schools to support twenty-five teachers that have specific needs for the... in three high schools to support 25 teachers that have specific needs for the programs. And we have very strict guidelines on how we have to do that on any kind of a budget amendment. We don't know if this is the final amount we will receive. We could be cut again. And that's based somewhat on, the way Leanne's budget is based on our, the state gets a certain amount based on population, and the state allocates that out to us. Last year, around December, January, we were given a little bit of an increase. Over the beginning of the year, we took that money, balanced the budget, did some budget amendments, and took that and put it back into what we could do for teachers. And then, of course, this year with COVID, we did use some of our funding for online software that was specific to CTE. So, any questions about that?
And our federal budget is 142-801. So we're very proud of what our teachers are able to do, but not a whole lot. And we do, our department does everything we can to get them what we need, what they need, and our students.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn. Next, we'll go to 143, with the Art and T.
Well, most people base their budget on the previous year, but this past year has been really different for us. We brought in way more money than we did. Because of the food handouts we did from the time school closed in March to the end of July, we pushed out around 600,000 meals. So we normally don't give one a break. Because we were doing seven-day food banks for each student. So we went back to the pre-pandemic budget, pretty close to it. And there's not really many changes in the budget at all, except for the raises. And we don't know how it's gonna look next year, whether they're gonna let us be never kid free, whether they're gonna extend that past this year or not. And they're supposed to give us additional guidance in April, but they have not, you know, it's going to change.
Lucy, can you talk to us about this $2 million plus difference of 3% from balance?
Um, well.
That jumped out at me. I just.
We make more money than we spend. And I'm usually pretty frugal when it comes to spending. I know the place that's still on me about that. And I asked about this year cafeteria tables for Slaughter High School. We replaced a stand-off machine. We got several things in the works, some ovens, a little pressure equipment for Troy High School. So we're trying to spend some money.
You've got $2 million to spend, still save a 3%.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's good.
It is good.
And we are trying to spend some other ones, because we don't, I don't ever know, you know, if they cut off the summer feeding program, that's where we have really started to be able to beef up our program. And if they ever cut that out, then, you know, the funds will not be so high.
Lon, do you have a thought? Can you still talk to us about the difference between the starting pay and the substitute pay? That seems to be way out of the back to.
Well, the substitute pay got changed, what, like two years ago? They raised it up to, I think.
Yeah, it's been several years.
Okay. And the cafeteria month of pay is almost a dollar less than these substitute pays. So if I had somebody trying out in the position as a sub, when I told them they were gonna get a job, I also had to tell them they were gonna take a $1,000 pay cut, and that just usually doesn't apply with all people. And I thought we could at least get it this time.
Do you need to bring this out? I guess that's my question.
I'm not sure what to tell you.
And so should we pay the same for the substitute that we do full-time?
Yes, and that's part of the salary schedule that I handed out at beginning of the meeting. It's highlighted in red. We put the subs and the monitors as the exact amount paid.
Okay, thank you. I know. I'd like to see that.
And that only is an additional around $1,500 in the year.
They're both in that same line.
Right.
Yeah, okay. I see that now. Yeah, there's a slash there that I didn't see either, so yeah, I did the same.
Maybe we might want to help in the food suite.
Oh, we might do really good then.
Yeah, I remember when we had the ball.
Yes.
I did too.
Go and just rob her, rob her the pay to make.
Her department's getting really strong.
But we took other stuff in the budget. Now we pay for our own food fleet, and then we pay for the rescat something and stuff. So we try to take more off.
Thank you. And the final item that you'll look at in your binder is 146, and that's talent search. And it's exactly the same as last year's budget. It's federally funded. We don't have the final numbers for that, and we'll want it till sometime in the summer. And then, of course, once we get those final numbers, we'll have to amend this to match that. But this one is just proposed exactly as the same, exactly the same as last year. And we didn't ask them to come and present tonight, because that's pretty straightforward. And Gail, like I said, I think this is a power point she's put us on. Future. Five discussion points, I guess you'd say. Just questions that we tend to have come back to us time and time again as we talk about budget ourselves and talk about budgets of the county commission. Property taxes, obviously, we discussed that tonight, and the fact that we do hope to see those increase, the amount that's brought in. We are under right now. BEP funding, trying again to get as close as we can to what our BEP numbers are, based on as people retire, or if we are able to transfer without hiring or replacing. Coker Creek Elementary, that is something that comes up every year at budget time. I know you get questions about that. We all do. And then future projects, both new building projects and just maintaining the facilities that we have now. All of those types of projects are things that we'll have to plan for. One of the things that, you know, that we do hope to talk to you about when we have a workshop on our ESTR 3 funds would be some of the projects that we would hope to be able to include in that money, that would help us down the road with future projects that we have planned for, and may be able to somehow accommodate with some of those funds. So that's something coming down the pipe that we will talk to you about. Any other discussion, questions, thoughts, based on what you've gone through tonight? I know it's exhausting.
I have one on subs. It's 400,000. Is that just projected, or I know we had problems getting subs this past year.
It's what? It's based on, we do the same amount. We look at the average of what we spend, and that's what we spend.
And keep it in this. Okay.
And we have had, I mean, we've had some times where, you know, it's been hard to feel. But overall, we, I don't think we have struggled even with anybody around us from what I've heard. I mean, I think we've done pretty well. There have been times when we had a lot of people quarantined that we were down. Quite a few. And the schools have done a great job of accommodating. They have stepped in and stepped up and filled in where necessary and done what they had to do. And we're appreciative of that. Hopefully, it's winding down.
Dr. Windsor, about my display of moment.
Sure.
To me, Gail, outstanding policy. How much you've been able to do, how you work through this process, like you got. So there is enough to consider. Thank you for your work.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent job.
And I hope, like, anything that you want to see changed, or want to see different, or would help you in any way, let me know. If you like the salaries behind the budgets, let me know. I'll continue that reward. Something that I would like to mention, you know, our budget looks good this year, but you also need to start thinking about next year, and the next year, and the next year. Just because we have a zero balance budget this year, the only reason that we are able to do that is because we have been told they're gonna hold us harmless in our BEP fund script, which supposedly, we're supposed to get the same amount next year as we're getting this year. And the ESTR 2.0 and ESTR 3.0 funds. Philip was able to take a large amount of money out of his budget because of that. If it was not for that, we would be hurt really bad. So I think that you need to think about what we can do in the future. Already, you need to already be thinking about what needs to happen next year.
You're talking about '22, '23 school year?
Yeah.
Okay, I stopped the one that she would just, let's give us, y'all got the Texas one about the bus wreck? You got there a little, a few more details if you can, that they saw a bit.
Sure. We were fortunate that the accident occurred prior to any students being on the bus. It was actually when the driver was leaving the lot for the bus's part. So the driver was okay. There were no injuries there. No students were on the bus, so no student injuries. The people in the vehicle were transported to the hospital and checked out, and they were released. Charlie checked on the, whenever it's due. So, of course, there's an ongoing investigation, as with any type of accident like that. But at this time, everything that we have news on is good news. No one injured, and that's where it's at.
I think it was Saturday. You know, we get this TSBA emails all the time. And we got one, and I looked at it last, a week ago Saturday. And I looked at it, and it says, okay, breakdown by school system on ESTR 3 funds. Anybody look at that chart? I know you did. See if I got an idea of what we're getting on ESTR 3? I'm talking about board members now. I was blown away. Over $11 million. I mean, over $11 million. And I talked to Dr. Windsor, and she wants us to have some input into that. We need to set a workshop date for the ESTR 3.0, which is a little over $11 million. She's gonna bring to the table, though, some suggestions and some things. First of all, 20% of that's gotta go to the learning this summer, the, what you call it, the learning loss, the learning loss from this past year. So you take 20% off, the other 80%, some of it can be spent on anything, some of it has to be spent in certain areas. And they're gonna, she's gonna, when we set this workshop, she's gonna explain all that to us, and then we can have some input into what areas we think, you know, this needs to go. Has to be spent by 2024, which is, which is good, and it doesn't have to be rushed, yeah. You're gonna just set that workshop, why don't you back it? How much time do you need to get the preliminary done? Like, we're talking about April, we're talking about May.
We can, we can anytime, but.
April 15 opens.
April 15 when the budget opens, then you plan, so probably anytime after April 15, we're ready to, we're ready to come together. It's due June 1st. We would like to submit it probably more like mid-April, I mean, mid-May.
Okay.
If you submit early, they'll review early. But it's due for sure June 1st, so we have a little under six weeks to get it done. So we wanna probably meet earlier in that window rather than like a short turnaround.
And if we find out sooner, then we obviously can go back and make changes if necessary. Things aren't approved.
Right.
So we don't want to wait till last minute.
Well, Thursday night, I left my calendar at home. Thursday night, come prepared with your calendar, so that we can set a workshop date for after the 15th of April, and so we can meet on that. Anything else anybody's got before we close our workshop? We'll meet you in Thursday night, and you receive your agenda. So, all right, workshop is, we're dismissed.
Is it gonna be another workshop at 5:30?